It started with our pre-meeting. Judge and quarter laid out date, Mr. City Manager. I won't be using mine unless it's absolutely necessary.
There we go. Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. This is the opportunity the council gets to take in order to hear from their judge. As you know, the judge is your employee, as is the.
Michael's right there.
Yeah, right there against the wall there.
The last update on my is five twenty-fourth. So I can't even pull up my agenda on this.
First, you should have a printed agenda on you.
I do.
Mr. Mayor, while they're looking at your iPad, do you mind if we invite the judge up to have a conversation? Is that all right? Thank you.
Judge Martina.
Carter, seven here just to kind of update you on things that have been going on since I saw you the last time we do this quarterly. Think this one's a little bit. The last one, but we've actually got. Jurors questionnaires, we were not getting. We were not getting very much response. And so we implemented a new procedure where we sent them all out at once. And we've been getting a great response with regard to the questionnaires that we've gotten back. So that's very positive. And I'm really glad to see that because we're having a very hard time getting the amount that we needed to have jury trials. We rescheduled yesterday. These on meeting to staff was going to be presenting on the different programs that we use with regard to probation. She was ill yesterday, so we rescheduled that to next Monday at four. We're going to have our next court matters meeting June fifteenth, where we get together to discuss issues with different departments and how those contribute to what's going on in the courts. Due to a couple of unique cases that we've had in the last couple of months, we've examined the process for determination of what to do in the event that myself and then Judge Hand recuse ourselves from specific cases. And we've worked with the city attorney's office and developed a really good, clear and concise procedure on how we're going to do that if it ever happens again. Happened one time in the five years I've been here, so I'm hoping it's another five years before we have to do it again. But we do have a good procedure in place that's, I think, fairly effective. And then you've had another specific issue with subpoenas, deuces, TICOM, is how we're going to get a written procedure done to handle the review of those materials. And so I've worked with Letitia, we got that taken care of and are really happy with both of those new processes that we put in place. The access to court proceedings is in progress and you should be available to view those proceedings in a month or so. I updated the bond schedule on May first, I submitted it to Letitia for review and putting that, inputting that into our system. And then she sent that down to PD Records, which then they input that into their system for us to have citations that come out that fit into both of those programs. A couple of important changes to the bond schedule. The T Larsen shoplifting, defrauding and inkeeper theft of services, which are all in our ordinances are converted. Typically, it was less than twenty, over twenty, and then subsequent offenses. But that statute that I gave you, that's going to go into effect on July first. And so we scaled that up from first offense on up. Those are all going to be must appear so that defendants can receive the proper advisements because the fifth will be a felony in the state of Wyoming. And so we want to make sure that they receive the appropriate advisements with each one that they do receive. The discrimination ordinance we put into the bond schedule about the must appear charge. So you can't just pay the ticket and move on. Basically, that's a must appear charge they have. Come into court so that we can assess on a case by case basis what is necessary for those charges. Classes that I'm taking over the summer that are of particular interest are medicine. Abuse disorder, that's been something that we've been discussing a lot about. And so I'm taking a class from the Judicial College to kind of get some more information. I'm not, I can maybe bring to the table as far as information. Self-represented litigants in commercial loaded vehicle cases, we see more and more of commercial loaded vehicle cases. And so I try to keep up on making sure that I'm following current trends on that. And then an implied consent class, of course. That is what I have to present today. Is there any questions I can answer?
Anyone have any questions for the judge? Mr. Damros.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Judge, for all the information. I was curious, the person convicted of a subsequent offense for theft shoplifting. You said that the state statute was amended in this most recent legislative session. Could you please explain to us what the amendment was? Was it three, three strikes before that, or how has it changed since then?
So basically, it was a thousand dollars or more for, for those crimes. And then now it's just a fifth or subsequent that the DA's office, it can be submitted to the DA's office to them take it under advisement to whether they want to charge it as a no. And so that's under sub-paragraph J, that's basically all the new portion of that statute that was included. And then another pertinent part, I think it's sub-paragraph G, that is in regard to taking fuel. That's under our debt of services ordinance where that comes into application.
Yes, please. Thank you, I'm sorry, I don't know if I heard you quite. Under subsection J, is there any discretion of yourself or anyone else? Or is it a hard and fast world five strikes or?
No, so basically what will happen is as those come in, law enforcement gets called. If they're not going to write a citation and they want to do it by information, then they'll submit the information to the city attorney's office. And then the city attorney's office has the discretion to basically look at the criminal history, kind of what happened in the case. And they can either submit it under our ordinance as a fifth or subsequent, or they can ask the DA's office to take it. That's similar to what we do in the DUIs now. Sometimes they take thirds to the DA's office, depending on the facts and circumstances and the pattern of behavior. Sometimes we keep them and handle them in municipal court. So there is some discretion. Once it comes to me and they're wanting to pursue it in, in the court, then typically go ahead and receive with that through our court.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the judge? Okay. Thank you, Judge, I've got something for you before you leave. This is a certificate of appreciation I get for you for your five years of service to the city of Casper. So that is for you in recognition of the great work you're doing for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks to Judge, with that, let's move on to the Youth Empowerment Council, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is the opportunity that the Youth Empowerment Council has requested to visit with the council as, as to some of their activities as well. And with that, I'd be happy to defer the floor.
Very good, do we have anyone here from the Youth Empowerment Council?
Yep.
Well, welcome to the podium. Is that, did that microphone come through these?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Okay, hi, I'm Justine, I'm with Youth Empowerment Council Mercer Family Resource Center. So we're going to talk a little bit about Mercer Family Resource Center and what we do. And then we're going to have the youth speak about the Youth Empowerment Council. So Mercer Family Resource Center is just actually down the street in the old Yellowstone District. We provide lots of different things to the community. We do community prevention, counseling, the Youth Empowerment Council, and parenting classes and youth at intervention. So I provided a couple of different flyers to you guys. So the, there's one that kind of covers Mercer and what we do and the impact that we've really had on Nettona County. And then one on Youth Empowerment Council. But I will let you guys look through that and then Craig's going to give you guys two numbers really quick. And then we'll let YEC go ahead and present to you on what they've run up to.
Hi, my name is Craig Mitchell. I'm a prevention education specialist for Mercer Family Resource Center and I helped Justine run the Youth Empowerment Council. In twenty-one through twenty-two, we've served over two thousand one hundred and eleven individuals at Mercer Family Resource Center in early and early prevention and intervention, over ten thousand one hundred and eighty-two service hours. And up those cases that we served, about ninety-five percent were successful in terms not having to seek placement outside of our programs, which is really helpful. In twenty-twenty-one compared to twenty-twenty-two, Mercer Family Resource Center had a sixty-one percent increase in youth referrals from the juvenile justice system. It's a pretty big uptick for the most part for our services and we've been meeting those quite well. Down below, if you look at a graphic that looks like this, you'll see some average costs for what external placement looks like for youth who are dealing with some of the issues that we have to help them with. Treatment out of home is typically pretty expensive if you look at those charts. We, over the course of our twenty-one and twenty-two years, saved about five million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in terms of services that would otherwise cost the state. So I'm going to turn it over to our Youth Empowerment Council members, we think you speak best for youth, so we're going to let them speak.
Youth Empowerment Council would like to extend our greetings to the council members this evening. Thank you for allowing us to come before you. YEC is a substance-free, responsible, open group of young leaders that collaborate to better the community, support one another, inspire youth, grow and lead by example. Our slogan is for youth by youth. We are comprised of a core group made up of approximately forty youth, have three individual subcommittees and provided one thousand four hundred and fifteen service hours during twenty-twenty-two. I will be talking about our lifesaving program, SPAT, which has been in operation for a decade. This year, the dedicated suicide prevention awareness team has presented to countless Nettona County students about the warning signs, risk factors and prevention habits associated with suicide in a state that boasts the United States highest suicide completion rate per capita. This program is essential in Nettona County. Our members have been pioneering our innovative three oh seven cares program. This initiative strives to make information and resources available to not only Nettona County, but the rest of the state as well. We are hoping to launch our three oh seven cares box full of, full of resources aimed at aiding addicted and unhoused folks in this, in the summer of twenty-twenty-three. We implore our permit, we implore your permission to station a trial box outside the N C P L and are open to answering any questions regarding these topics.
Have any questions for this young lady?
Can you explain what the resources box is? What they have in them, I got to visualize it because I know I'm going to forget here. Um, these boxes will have period products, water, chapstick, resource, resource pamphlet, pamphlets, pill locks, gun locks, first aid kits, hand sanitizer wipes, the active addiction phone number, the safe medicine, the activation bags, medical assistance toolkit, hygiene products, family addition, family addiction toolkit, nicotine sensation products and twelve step A A books. That is question for you all? Awesome, if that's it, I will turn it over to my fellow council member, Kaden. Thank you.
So aside from SPAT, three oh seven care boxes, YEC also had a green team, which helps with a community garden and it sort of maintains that and plans it, but actually this year, Justine planted it. But anyway, they maintain that and help it to grow. This allows them to have easier access to food that is nutritious, is also maintaining it, brings physical activity, which overall helps with mental health. The green team also helps pick up garbage around the community, especially downtown, and hopes to inspire others to also help to pick up around town to keep our community looking beautiful. YEC also had a Y M provider program, which is to help with substance use prevention by introducing youth to sort of outdoor activities, sports, arts, music, and sort of allowing them to sort of explore these more interesting things to help them to be led away from substance use. Twenty-four percent of youth have. Sorry. Have been at gatherings where large amounts of alcohol were available. Fifty-six percent have been at a community event where adults were drunk. Forty-seven percent of you have consumed alcohol. Twenty percent say that they got this alcohol from their parents. Twelve percent say they got it from another adult member of the community. And seven percent say they got it from their peers and that's alcohol alone, not other substances. So that's this, Y M by program is to help sort of prevent that.
Does anyone have any questions before she leaves? Mr. Bond?
So I'm not sure if there's, someone here can maybe answer this, I'm not sure if there is an answer to this question, but I was involved at the very early beginnings of the Youth Empowerment Council many, many years ago. And I recall that there were a series of research based, I would call it protective factors is the term I, I remember. And I'm just wondering if those are still kind of used as a kind of a guiding, you know, set of signposts in terms of the assets and so forth that youth need to have that, that can oftentimes prevent negative behaviors.
Absolutely, so YEC, I think our focus is on producing those risk factors and promoting protective factors. So if you look at like our hashtag Y M amplify events, they're free to all the youth in the community to attend. And so this Thursday, we have one at Rotary By You, we had a Valentine's Day dance recently. But it's just a way for kids to go and find another activity to amplify their life. We meet every Thursday night from six o'clock to seven, we provide dinner, we do activities. We do. The resource boxes, that's something new that they're going to be doing this year. And so we're going to try to kind of go on. But yeah, definitely, that's what we keep in mind. And the cool thing about Y E C is it's youth-led, so they decide what direction we're going to go, what they're passionate about, and we just support them with that passion. And so all of these ideas, everything that they do is, is them.
Thank you.
Counselor Anger Breton, you'll have to bear with us, this is our first time in this building and we're going to have some issues certainly. Hopefully minor, but nonetheless, Counselor Anger Breton.
So I did have a question for somebody who wants to look at joining the youth empowerment, do they just, what do they?
They just show up, so.
Where do they show up?
At Mercer Family Resource Center, Thursday nights from six to seven.
Okay.
Yep, so they just show up. We do have like an application within Home of Fun, but it's pretty basic, like what's your favorite food and just basic information, but yeah. Sure.
We value Y E C because it's one of the only youth-led programs that doesn't have specific requirements for you to join this group. You don't have to be athletic, you don't have to be academic, it really is a space that involves everybody and we take that very much.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, thank you for, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Sorry.
No, you're not.
No, no question, I just really want to thank you all for coming to present and I really appreciate the youth coming to present. We don't get to hear from, you know, the sixth, grades six to twelve very often, so I really appreciate you ladies.
Always welcome, always.
As far as that resource box, can we wait a response to you guys at a different time?
Can you say again, please?
So they want to place a resource box and that'll box up at the library. And they're partnering with different organizations in the community of like public health to supply it with just different things for people who are in need. And so we just wanted to see if that would be okay if we got permission to place a box outside of the library.
The county operated facilities, you would have to actually probably clear that with them, I'm assuming, Mr. City Manager.
Correct.
Yeah, so yeah, it's, that's run and operated by the county.
Hello, there.
Thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome. And I would urge you to reach out to the county commission, they'll be the ones that can help you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, energy efficiency conservation block grant application, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. The gist of tonight's request along these lines is whether or not we have your blessing to pursue some grant funds that we potentially could apply towards some efficiency improvements. There's a number of ways in which that could be considered, as you probably saw in your memo. Some of the things that appeal to me as it relates to the, the list of ways in which these dollars could be used is with regard to trying to lower the operating cost for one of our facilities in, in the organization. City Hall, for example, maybe the Casper Business Center and so on. However, there's a number of things to consider. However, we really can't get started if indeed council's not game for this idea. And so we wanted to run this by you, give you the opportunity to answer any questions. I realize we're kind of short on, on time, we essentially have three minutes at this point. So if council would like to ask a couple of questions or defer this topic for another time, we can do that too.
One question would be, what would the financial implication be for the city?
The, there is no match requirement, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Won't take up too much time, I was surprised how much the city spends on energy, five point six million. I was curious, Carter, I brought up the fact that Cheyenne has installed a hydroelectric dam to cover the cost of running their regional water facility. I had also brought up a wastewater treatment plant, a jugular capturing methane to sustain the operations there. Put a grant like this, I realize it's small, I think it was only a couple hundred thousand or something like that. But could this grant theoretically be applied to a project like that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I, I would suggest that that's probably outside of the reach of this program. But I, but I do think that that's the same spirit, if you will, with regard to the dollars and, and potentially achieving some efficiencies that we haven't had before.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further, if you would please move to this side of the room so that when people come in, they have a seat and they're not having to step over top of all of you. So if there's a seat empty to your right, please move to it. I understand it's cramped, it's, it's new for all of us, but it'll make life a lot easier on people coming in the door so they don't have to cross in front of the dimes. Thank you very much for your help. Any other questions concerning the. No, are we okay with moving forward and giving our staff recommendations to move forward? It's good access and grants, are we okay with that? Can I get a thumbs please? Okay, there you go, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Let's move on to agenda review, please.
Your Honor, I don't have anything to add on this particular item.
All right, with that said, it is now six o'clock, so we're going to move right into our meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, I know it's crowded, I know the hearing is not going to be the best at times. We're going to have to do it for the next twelve, thirteen months. And welcome. So before we begin this evening, I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Council meetings are also live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. I now call the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action, excuse the absence of Vice Mayor Pacheco. Go move, do I have a second?
Second.
Move by Counselor Kathleen, seconded by Counselor Paul, all voting aye. Any nays? Very good, record the vote, please.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, please join Mr. Bond, in the pledge of allegiance to the flag happens to be left of state. Here would entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting is published and the Casper start to convene on students' boards, two thousand twenty-three. Second, move by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Kathy, any amendments? Please, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye. Record the vote.
With all counselors voting. And the motion.
To put in action the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three general bills and claims is audited by City Manager Naker.
So move.
By Counselor Anger Breton, seconded by Counselor Haskins, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye. Any nays? Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, the chair would entertain a motion to approve. On six, two thousand twenty-three conflict claim is audited by City Manager Naker. Paul, seconded by Counselor Anger Breton, any abstentions or nay votes?
Sorry, I'm lost right now. I will defer to you, yeah, I'll confirm that here in a moment.
We'll wait for you. We're on there conflict place.
What page in our package? I don't have a script. Yeah, I'll abstain.
All voting aye? Please record a vote.
With Counselor Gamroth, extension noted and all other counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. We now move on to bright spots in our community, would like to welcome members of the Rotary Club of Casper to come forward to be recognized for their contributions to the city of Casper. Rotary Club is one of many Rotary chapters across the nation. This local nonprofit organization is comprised and global citizens united for the common good. Goals include solving real problems facing the community, taking action on substantial projects, connecting leaders in our community, supporting educational programs, showing the local economy. The city of Casper would like to recognize the Rotary Club of Casper for their most recent contributions to the Casper community. Thanks to their generous donation, the city of Casper Parks Division has or will make improvements for city parks and playgrounds. More specifically, the Rotary Club of Casper has committed the following in two thousand twenty-three. Fifty thousand dollars towards a new toddler playground structure and shelter at City Park. Twenty-five thousand dollars in concrete improvements at the North Casper Skate Park. Twenty-five thousand dollars towards a new playground structure at Meadowlark Park. And twenty-five thousand dollars plus in-kind volunteer work at Crossroads Adventure Park. These contributions add to the legacy of the Rotary Club of Casper's dedication to developing green spaces and parks around Nettona County. We recommend Rotary Club of Casper. We commend Rotary Club of Casper for being a bright spot in our community.
May have a moment, I do have a fifty thousand dollar check for, pardon me here, thank you.
Well, the city certainly commends the work that you folks do and we are very thankful to have you in our community doing the good. So thank you, so. Yes, sir.
Everybody buy a duck derby ticket, okay? That's where the money comes from, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
In August.
August, when's duck derby, August? August. August twentieth, okay.
Okay, now's the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. This portion of the meeting is dedicated to the public to allow them time to voice their concern. Therefore, council will take communications under advisement, and if they choose to respond, it will do so at a later time. Please state your name, correct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal obscenities or threats will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will be referred to our city manager. If council chooses to address these matters, it will be done during the introduction of measures and proposals by council, which come at the end of the evening. Presentations are limited to five minutes, no time extensions are permitted. And please note that public hearings each have their own comment period, so if you're here to comment on one of those, please wait until that time. Sir, please state your name and the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Ross.
Good evening. My name is Ross Trifman. I'm a member of the Casper Pro-Life Community and a member of the Jewish Pro-Life Foundation. I'm here to express my First Amendment rights. While we should be careful with the words we use, we are obligated to speak the truth. I will not sugarcoat this. Sadly, violence has come to our community, brought here by a business based in Washington, DC. Just a few blocks from here, babies are dying and women are at risk for medical and emotional harm. And abortion is a procedure that intentionally takes the life of a unborn baby. Therefore, I stand here this evening with the support of more than two hundred and sixty of my fellow citizens to present to you the following proposed resolution. Whereas Wyoming is the equality state, and whereas the Wyoming Constitution states in section one that all members of the human race are equal. And whereas unborn children are part of the human race, and whereas all persons of the human race have value and deserve to live. And whereas unborn are the most vulnerable humans. Be it resolved that the city of Casper condemns the establishment of a business in our city that plans to kill unborn babies in painful and inhumane ways for profit. Every year, about nine hundred thousand babies die of abortion in our nation. And over sixty million since nineteen seventy-three. In the chemical abortion, the mother takes two pills. The first one starves the baby to death. The second pill causes the mom's uterus to contract and forces the dead baby out of her mother and usually into the toilet. The baby is then flushed and ends up in our sewer system. Risk to the surviving mother includes severe pain, heavy bleeding, infections, undetected ectopic pregnancy, which is life-threatening, permanent infertility, and emotional trauma to seeing her dead baby floating in the toilet. It has been reported that this business is performing second trimester abortions known as dilation and evacuation. The second trimester is from fourteen weeks to twenty-seven weeks after conception. The size age, the baby already kicks, moves, and can hear our voices. In this procedure, the abortion doctor uses tools to open the cervix and then grasp and pull off legs, arms, and other body parts through the mom's vaginal canal. Finally, the baby's head is grasped and crushed. All the pieces are put together to make sure no pieces is left inside the mom. Can anyone remain neutral while this is occurring in Casper? The People's Legislature overwhelmingly passed the Life is a Human Right Act, but a judge has put a hold on it. Women who face the difficulty of an unplanned pregnancy need our compassion and support. Although most abortions are done for financial, career, or age reasons, the law provides exceptions for the small number of situations such as life-threatening to the mother. Even in those cases, preterm induction of delivery is the safest and most humane procedure rather than a brutal abortion. It allows parents to mourn the loss of their child. And a miscarriage is not an abortion because it is not the intentional killing of a baby. For women in crisis, my message is clear. A problem today, you will soon realize what a great bundle of joy you have inside you. There are so many people in here in Casper willing to help. We care about you. Please don't make a quick decision. Take your time to explore your options. There are free resources that can smooth away. Mr. Mayor and Council, please give our resolution your consideration and acknowledgement. The Casper is a pro-baby, pro-mom, and dads pro-life-affirming paradise. At this time, I ask all those that support this resolution to stand and pray silently for the moms, babies, and families. We especially pray for the staff of the abortion clinic, that their hearts are changed and that they join with us throughout whole life, our most precious gift. Thank you.
I thank you, sir.
And I have opinions with the resolution. Should I give it to the manager?
Probably, yes. Do they have the ability to see the clock or is it just me?
It's on this computer as well.
Ma'am, please state your name.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jeanette Warren. I moved here from the state where abortion is legal up to and including the moment of birth. And that law was co-sponsored by my twenty-twenty state senate Democrat opponent. So it warms my heart to see so many committed to the cause of life here in Wyoming. But I'm here to tell you, unless you stand up, sacrificing to the god Molek will become reality here, too, as it already has been explained. For those of you who don't know, Molek was a false god, really a demon, to whom the ancient world sacrificed their children by making them pass through the fire or burning them to death. Now, in our modern age, we do it cleanly, clinically, diabolically. We are returning to the primitive, to neo-paganism. As Bob Dylan said, you're going to have to serve somebody. It may be the devil, or it may be the Lord, but you're going to have to serve somebody. Just a few weeks ago, I got into a back and forth discussion with the president of the Netroman County Republican Women, who argued that we should give up on the pro-life cause to gain Republican votes and that standing for life violates the separation of church and state. She seems to be under the Constitution or Declaration of Independence and that her position is a religious one, not based on biological reality. And that letter that Thomas Jefferson wrote to the Danbury Baptist about the separation of church and state promised to keep the state out of the business of the church and not establish a state-sponsored church and not to keep the church out of the state. Fortunately, a majority of We the People and Wyoming legislators who were elected by We the People understand this, and House Bill one fifty-two and Senate File one oh nine, that's Life is a Human Right Act and prohibiting chemical abortions, became law, although House Bill one fifty-two without the governor's signature. I was proud to co-sponsor them both as the representative for House District Fifty-seven. However, Governor Gordon appointed a radical judge in Jackson who gave the middle finger to the legislature and We the People and put a temporary restraining order on our law on the basis that it establishes religion and that abortion is health care. I'm here to tell you that killing babies is not health care, but it is a religion. It's funny how the court protects the so-called medical freedom right of women to kill their babies, but did not protect our rights when we were being forced vaccinated or losing our jobs during this pandemic. So now, because we have a governor who's not really pro-life and we have the will of We the People and the right to life being thwarted by a radical judge, and we have an abortuary now open at nine eighteen East Second Street. This abortuary is illegal. It is not a legal business. I implore you as the lesser magistrates to abide by the law and the will of We the People and prevent the business from performing its gruesome, macabre activities. The city council needs to stand up and take action to shut it down.
Thank you, Mayor. State your name, ma'am.
My name is Terry Winship. I'm the former president and CEO of True Care Women's Resource Center, a medical pregnancy resource center here in Casper, and I retired last year after about twenty-three years of working there. I'm just going to touch real briefly on possible side effects of abortion. So possible side effects range from the less severe and most common, such as bleeding, cramping, fatigue, diarrhea, nausea, vomiting, and chills, to the more severe and less common, such as heavy bleeding, infection, damage to the cervix and uterus, incomplete abortion, future preterm births, complications in future pregnancies, and infertility. Whether a woman experiences severe side effects after an abortion can depend on her current physical health. For instance, a woman seeking an abortion should be screened and treated for certain sexually transmitted diseases prior to having an abortion to avoid infection that can lead to pelvic inflammatory disease, which can affect her future fertility when she may want to have a child. Now, the emotional effects of abortion may include things like depression, sadness, and anxiety, relationship difficulties, suicidal ideation and attempts, as well as inability to bond with her other children and negative coping behavior, such as drug and alcohol abuse. Now, the emotional effects a woman may experience after having an abortion may depend on emotional and mental health. Women who feel pressured by a boyfriend, husband, parents, or some other significant person in their lives are also more likely to experience the emotional side effects of abortion. In my experience, a large percentage of women who come to True Care for pregnancy testing and education on their options in an unplanned pregnancy report being pressured by someone to abort, someone they know, someone they love. Other pressures they're dealing with include concerns about finances and interruption to their education or careers. The goal of True Care, in addition to education on all options, is to help women identify who or what is pressuring them to abort and help them find resources and emotional support if they decide to carry to term. And even the spiritual lives of some women are affected by abortion. Again, pressure from a loved one can play a big part in this. Women who regularly practice their abortion or regularly practice their religion or who grew up in a family or culture where abortion is seen as a sin are more likely to feel distant or abandoned by God. Many women initially feel relief after their abortions. They've gotten rid of the problem. And regret doesn't always manifest right away. It's often eight to ten years after an abortion before a woman seeks help for the emotional or spiritual effects. And that's only if she's made aware of the fact that the abortion may be the root cause of her emotional or spiritual suffering. And you know, these are things we just don't often talk about or hear about. Most women are encouraged just not to think about it and just get on with their lives. But eight to ten years is a long time to suffer in silence. And True Care is able to refer women for post-abortion counseling as well. So thank you for this opportunity to discuss on possible side effects of abortion.
Does this work?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Carolyn. When I was thirteen years old, I became pro-life. I saw actual photos of a fetus. That means an unborn baby. After the head and torso of the baby were torn apart, I decided right then and there, I'm pro-life and I will always be pro-life. And I'm a woman. No person or group has the right to speak for me or for women as a whole. For me, any conversation about women's rights must include the rights of those tiny people being torn apart and burned from the mother's wombs. Not everyone agrees with my passionate defense of life in the womb. Some people believe there are conditions under which a woman should be allowed to end the life of their unborn child. Some people believe this should be allowed for no reason at all. But it's still a violent act resulting in the death of a living, growing, precious human being. And for most of the last fifty years, the laws have protected that violence. But I've been peacefully protesting this for almost, well, forty years, forty-plus years. And we've also been praying against this barbaric practice and the exercising of the right to have and hold our own children close during these last forty-plus years. Actually, in the last forty-plus years, I've lost a child, a grandchild, to abortion myself. This is very personal for all people who test abortion here in Casper. Do so through an organization called Forty Days for Life. That organization is an organization that's been around for a very long time. And when you show up to do a peaceful protest, which is what all of ours are, you are required to sign a contract. This is a contract for no violence. This is a contract that says that things, for example, that our behavior will be lawful, non-political, that we will not trespass, that we will not use offensive or vulgar language, and we will have no physical contact with anyone that's not in our group. We will refrain from yelling or returning verbal aggression from others. And we are to simply pray quietly or say the rosary, if you're a Catholic, if you wish, and hold our signs showing decency and respect. Some of our Catholic protesters say the rosary every time that they protest, but we always protest in peace. Yet, although we do this, we have been shouted at. We have had people drive by and swear at us, curse at us, get in our faces, right up to our faces, screaming and throwing things at us from moving cars. We've had an elderly woman rip our signs out of our hands and kick our protesters. We've been threatened, cursed at, and falsely accused of setting the fire that a misguided young woman from a town almost two hundred miles away set. Actions like these rightfully need to be punished. And no matter who a person, what side a person is on, if they commit an act of violence, they need to be held accountable according to the law. So we all should be able to agree in this, in this room, in this community, that peaceful protest is a time-honored principle that our nation stands on. It's a time-honored principle of natural law that goes back centuries. And yet, when we're told that we don't have the right to stand on the street corner or on the sidewalk to speak that which is most passionate in our hearts, it hurts us deeply. We respect those who disagree with us, but we are never going to sit silently and not stand and pray and speak up for what we fervently believe in our hearts. You know, there's a long history of people doing that and not being popular at the time that they did it, but then somehow history usually vindicates them. Wilberforce was one. He worked twenty years before he got the Slave Trade Act passed in eighteen oh seven in Britain. And Galileo, ironically, is another example, who understood that whether the sun or the earth was the center of our galaxy, but he was put under house arrest for the rest of his life. There was no toleration for dissenting views at that point. So you know, we're probably going to have a little bit more violence in this, in this, in this community over this issue by those who will not respect peace, civility, and the rule of law and that you need to have the ability and the right to have a peaceful protest. But we are asking the city council and this community to support us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Reckdell. We assembled for prayer, full sign, at nine eighteen East Second Street, out of love for mothers, babies in need of something better than abortion. We pray for a change of heart among staff at Wellspring Health Access. We pray for the end of abortion in our community. We represent thirty-seven faith communities in the Casper area who know that silence in the face of people is not an option. And we have a further request of you. We would like to come alongside of you, city council, and work with you to make our community a sanctuary for the unborn. Sixty-seven cities and two counties have so far done this in our nation. We're willing to work to make this happen, but we need your help. We would like your thoughtful guidance toward this endeavor. Together, we can make a difference. There's a couple of reasons I think you should consider that our request. Injuries to mothers are real. One young lady shared with me that every time her little boy asked about having a baby brother, she cries remembering that her last baby was aborted, causing cervical cancer, leaving her unable to have children. This is one of many, many stories. Ultrasound science is conclusive. Women previously seeking abortion overwhelmingly choose life when they see their ultrasound. Women previously seeking abortion overwhelmingly choose life when they see their ultrasound. We have free ultrasound services available to both services offered by Wellspring Health Access. In the video Silent Scream, Dr. Bernard Nathanson, who was responsible for thousands of abortions, saw for the first time the inhumanity of abortion with the advent of the ultrasound. He and his colleagues never did another abortion. The movie included actual ultrasound video of an abortion at 12 weeks. The baby's heart begins to race at 2 minutes as she violently tries to escape the abortion instrument. There could be no doubt about the baby's sense of danger or feeling pain. Abortion opposes natural law. Our founding fathers believed in natural law, knowing without it, our nation would fail. The right to life is a because it comes from God. If men created such a right, they could take it away again. Abortion is not a right. By its true definition, abortion is never needed. Abortion hurts women. The will of the people is being trampled. Our community is pro-life. We hear the many horns honking and lots of thumbs up and support of life. The people's laws have been repressed. There is much frustration. Clients are coming from surrounding states. Will Casper go on the map as an abortion capital? Our citizens oppose this violent industry. Are peaceful people who love God
Welcome. State your name, please.
Mary Schmidt. I just have a couple of questions for you, the board, and perhaps the chief of police who's here. As far as Wellspring goes, it is illegal to serve under 18 without a parent permission. And yet, the clinic will be doing abortions, which will you ensure the safety of children that might perhaps find themselves pregnant and not? Will they be prevented from going in the clinic and having abortions without their parent consent? Secondly, they will also be providing gender dysphoria therapies, which is non-FDA approved. And I didn't know that our city or our county gives medical license for non-FDA approved treatments for non-life threatening or any medical treatments. And so will you ensure that children will not be allowed to go into that clinic without parental permission? And will you make sure that any medical advice that is given to a gender dysphoria patient, that the parent, if they so choose to take them in there, is notified that this is FDA, this is not FDA-approved medical treatments? The medications are not approved for it, the surgeries are not approved for it? And will you also ensure that our children and the parents of children of this nature will not be encouraged to go and take free gender dysphoria clinical surgery down in Colorado? Because this clinic does have associations in Colorado and they are offering free transportation, free surgeries, free everything. So will you please let me know if you, as a city, that has issued a business license to this clinic, will ensure that our children will be safe and that parents will be properly notified and informed of all of the dangers of this therapy that is not medically necessary. It is irreversible. And if you don't ensure that, then I would think the city will be liable for any child who goes through this, can't reverse it, and comes back to sue you because you issued a license to practice in this state that is not medically okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carol Chafin. I'm in Casper. I'm here to talk to you about CNFR. See, I thought I was going to talk about abortion, huh? Well, I was your sales rep back in the Convention and Visitors Bureau of the 1990s that brought about CNFR, Cruising for the Oldies, and a host of other events. Those events just don't fall in your lap. There was a lot of hard work that went into bidding, the bidding process. Just because they've been here for over 20 years does not guarantee that you will continue having them. They came here, I remember, as a sales rep, because we were a family-friendly community. How much longer will that be the case when you've got an active abortion clinic here? I don't care if you got an ironclad contract. I don't care if you have a 10-year contract. They'll leave if they see that and seek another destination. A few weeks ago, I went to pick up my laundry, but instead of going out the way I came, I went through the back alley where the abortions are coming in. And I saw a man down in his car and literally pulled a woman out. I wanted to stop at my car. I wanted to go over there and I wanted to hug her and I wanted to take her to the statehouse. But I know if I stepped foot on that property, I'd be facing probably federal prison charges. That's how that place is. It's locked up like a prison. Even the garbage can is locked. I don't know why in the city they have such other things. They say they're here for healthcare, but their real aim is the abortion. The other part is just a front. I've seen it. It's just a front to look legit. They make anywhere between $400 for the pills to $4,000 to remove a 23-week-old baby. Now, what kind of customers come in to that clinic? Prostitutes, sex traffickers, child molesters, pedophiliacs bring their victims. And maybe they will be paying a few lodging dollars. Yeah, a lodging dollars where they're living local afterwards to recover from the abortion before they go back to Nebraska or South Dakota. This is their words, not mine. They're saying that they're going to make this abortion desert into a Casper is going to be a abortion tourist destination. That's their words, not mine. So you can defend the right for that abortion clinic to be here, but at what cost? Financially, we are experiencing already an increase in use of our law enforcement because of all the violence that's going with them. What about our tourist dollars? What about the CNFR decides that they want to go to Gillette or Cheyenne? What about the high school tournaments? What coach is going to be okay with finding out that they have students that have the rooms right next door are being occupied by prostitutes or the molesters who bring their victims in? How long is it going to last? Before that coach says, now, let's go to Cheyenne? I remember when I did it for this. Cheyenne is a big competitor and so is Gillette. They can easily house that CNFR and the tournaments if they wanted to, if they decide to go. So I'm begging you, please, look at this. Look at it financially. They're not going to look at it any other way. That's costing the city. And take up this petition.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Hopkins. And I think we're looking for solutions for women, women to be able to have choices. And I'm going to share a couple of personal stories about some of my friends and what they thought their family thought were solutions for them. When I was 17 years old, I actually grew up in Phoenix, Arizona. I had a friend that was pregnant. And her mother thought the solution would be to have an abortion. And so she had the abortion and that was their solution. What did my friend do? She was so devastated. She was so in love with her boyfriend that they got pregnant again. Another friend of mine I met later, who went after, I'd had probably about four kids. I have six kids now. But she had five children. And early, when she was a teenager, she had an abortion. And her mother, her stepmother at the time, thought it was a solution for her to have an abortion because she was young and she needed to go to college. She did end up having five more children, but she carried that with her. She was devastated. It broke up her marriage because she couldn't get over the previous boyfriend she loved so much and that she had killed their child. We talk about solutions for women to rid themselves of their child because they should move on and be in, have such a freedom. But there is no freedom. I mean, if we're thinking about, you know, to rid yourself of a child and have freedom, but you have another child anyways because you're grieving so much for that child you lost. We have not solved anything. We have a broken woman now who's trying to fill an empty space. Abortion is not the solution. True Care has found a solution. They are helping women to allow this abortion clinic here because you think there's a solution. There is not a solution here. You have broken women. That is what you are creating on Second Street. I am a woman who has had six children. And any woman who's had a child feels something. It does something to you. It changes you. It is natural and it is normal to have a child. It is not natural and normal to kill a child purposely in your womb. So let's talk about solutions. Let's talk to True Care. Let's talk to other organizations that offer real solutions to women in Casper, Wyoming. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Miles Martin. We're changing the subject for a moment. I was told I could bring some documents down here. I'll present them to the as soon as I'm done. I finally got the all season procedures for filing a complaint against the Casper Police Department. This is the first time in 18 years. Late from the past year. And this year, I tried to get it going through the city manager's office and through Chief McPeters. And I haven't been able to get one complaint filed. And I've got the paperwork right here that shows that I'm demanding their resignations. I've been trying to get medical care. I can't get cancer care here in the city of Casper, at the Medical Center, at the Rock Mountain Oncology, at the Community Health Center, at the Air Doctor. This is what they did to me at the skin clinic. I can't get an assault charge filed against the doctor because of these people. Now, which one bring this demand for their resignation with three of the six fake police reports that were filed in the last year? And I just called through Detective Wencowski this morning. He's waiting six months before they do the identity theft. And they're not even looking at the assault charges against the Casper Skin Clinic who's attacking the scalpel last year and they even stalked me. And I couldn't even get the police report from them. So I'm just going to draw, and here's the fake, here's the blank complaint form I was given here in March 27th of this year. I was never allowed to fill it out. I was never allowed to discuss it with Chief McPeters. He claimed this morning that he dismissed all the charges against all of the Casper Police Department. But here's the three fake police reports right here. Identity theft, assault, and they haven't done one thing. And I'll take this up with the, I've got a US rep in Congress that's going to take this matter up. Try to get it submitted to a federal committee. And I'll be doing that tomorrow morning or tomorrow at 2:00. I already called the FBI on them and they hung up on me, but they said they were going to call me back, so sorry about the mess. I'll just drop these off to you though.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry if I'm having a hard time. My face is paralyzed. All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to council this evening? Jessica?
Welcome. Thank you. Well, mine's not as
State your name, sir, for the audience.
Kenneth Bates. As these guys, but I feel it's just as important. So I hope you guys will, council will consider it as well. I'm here to request one of you to bring an item to talk about tonight, that I'll be talking about tonight, to one of your future work sessions. And I hope you will do it sooner than later. The item is not for me or anyone I know, but it's for a group who interacts with city council. See, I was at the NC Awards Ceremony a couple of weeks ago where students received school awards and scholarships for colleges. One of the group of students who received awards was the NC Student Council. Now, I know that Councilman Ray, who is not here at this time, but has worked with student council at the high school. And I have heard him give great speeches regarding the work that they do and how they are the future when I was on council and I've watched from my computer screen. I have watched other council members agree with him regarding his speeches about his high school council. The item I would like to discuss is the city of Casper to offer a scholarship of $500 and $1,000 for two senior students with each of the high schools who are on student council body. We know that Kelly Walsh and NC have a student council body, so that would total at $3,000, that the city of Casper would be investing in the future of four students' councils' lives. I recommend a condition to be put on it, which the scholarship has to be towards a accredited Wyoming college. If another high school in Natrona develops a student council body or already has one, I would hope that the city would include two or include two of their senior students for a scholarship also. I know you have been discussing the budget and I believe that the finance department and the city manager's office could find a way to fit such a small amount into the city's budget for the future of these students. I am sure that the city attorney will have to see if legally the city of Casper could award such scholarships. However, the confidence you have in Mr. Nelson, I believe he can find a way for the city to be able to award those students a scholarship. You have a real opportunity to invest in the possible future of a city councilman and/or councilwoman just like yourselves. Please let your words become actions if this is a possibility. So now I ask, will one of you be willing to bring this up in a work session or a discussion?
The first thing I'll tell you, Mr. Bates, is that is probably something we can look into, I'm assuming, Mr. City Manager. Secondly, though, I think you're going to run into a little bit of a wall in order to go towards an accredited school only because not all of our constituents go to college. So there's got to be some type of a, and not every councillor up here's been to college. So there's got to be, well, I'm assuming. I don't know if that's true or not actually. So there's gotta be, well, I'm assuming, I don't know if that's true or not actually, but um, so it's probably something we could certainly look into, but I think it'll have a lot broader parameters than what you're bringing. Um, but I'm willing to, to put that on a future agenda item for us to look into, at least.
And that's all I'm asking, is the future of those guys um for the student council that come and sit in front of all of you guys, come and give you reports. It's about them and they don't have to go to college obviously to be on council, but for the city to invest in them, I don't, I think that's worth it.
Well, we will look into it, sir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Kathy, I thank you this evening. Um, I guess my understanding is most of you here on the council are pro-abortion. Uh, maybe not pro-life. And really, I think that the issue here tonight is not what your personal beliefs are, as you're sitting here in official capacity. But you're, you are um tasked with upholding law. Our Wyoming Legislature just clearly passed legislation that prohibits abortions. If we were, if our community had a, you know, a prostitution business. Our, our Casper Police Chief and um detectives at Natrona would do what they could to shut that down. Because they are, it's a prohibited activity. And the same thing should be said of Wellspring. So with that in mind, I ask that you uphold law and that you shut Wellspring down. Thank you.
Just wanna address something, this is, we will have a comment time later, but I do want the audience to understand that we are not, not upholding the law, our police department is not, not upholding the law. That's not what's going on here, there is a federal judge in the state of Wyoming, not a federal judge, excuse me, a state judge. Who has put a stay on that, they're currently operating legally within the city of Casper. Unfortunately, for me, there's nothing this council can do to stop them right now. They are on a stay by a judge, and I understand that the legislature approved it, but this judge has issued a stay for the moment. So until it gets to the Supreme Court and is heard operating, and right now, the city council nor the police department can do anything about it. Right now, we've just gotta let it run its course unfortunately, but that's how it works. So I just wanna be very clear that we are not up here whether, whatever our beliefs are, we're not condoning anything. They are legally operating right now in the city of Casper. Much to my dismay, just like yours, but not to dismay of everyone, I'm just letting you know they are legally operating right now. So with that said, ma'am, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Kamala Hicks. Um I have a little disgruntled, this is the opinion part for me, that I've lived in Wyoming thirty years. And remember, when I first came to Casper, I had one little boy and he's now thirty years old. And um, we came here because this community showed in every possible way what it was to be family, quite honestly. A place that you can let your kids out. Their yard, everybody, there was a joint in the schools and you didn't have to worry about what was being taught. And it gave me a lot of hope, because I came from Phoenix, Arizona. I'm in the big city. I knew what it was like, also as a foster kid. And my mother giving me up at thirteen years old. And I have lost a child, but it wasn't to abortion. It was five weeks of trying to save that baby. And I lost him. It happened or afterwards. And knowing that, that little one, when he died in his daddy's arms. He was given the breath and the chance to live. Wellspring is not giving the chance to live. And unfortunately, one of those nurses in that, in that delivery room, actually accused me of having an abortion. Because we didn't resuscitate. But in five weeks before that, I had gone into labor several times, doing everything possible to save him. Then he died. Then, four months later, I ended up pregnant again, moved back to Arizona from California. And I lost that one too, naturally. God has a purpose here. Casper is a hub, a place where we can call family. If we continue to encourage points like that woman did. Call this, this baby out. And then just let it die. She didn't want that to happen, but he had to die. Because he was completely disformed inside. His body was not growing the way it needed to or developed the way it needed to. Had we tried to save him, he would have had many more problems if not died in a very short time afterward. Wellspring don't give life. They keep taking away. I'm appealing to you, please find any way possible in this. We need to keep Wellspring out of Casper and out of Wyoming. There's a purpose for these children. Even in the worst conditions. And there's adoption, True Care and other organizations are able to help those women. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak to council this evening? Very good, we will move forward. Thank you for those that spoke, appreciate you coming tonight. Uh establish uh, please read the consent at the end of the papers.
Seven A, one A, Adoption of Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three to Twenty Twenty Four Budget. Seven A, one B, Adoption of Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three Budget Amendment Number Three.
Thank you, Attorney Attorney Tanner, we've been two bi-minute acts to establish the public hearing. Plead by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Kathy, thank you. Please record a vote. Ladies and gentlemen, you have to exit this way, sorry, I didn't realize people were going that way, this is the outdoor over here.
With all counsel's voting, I have the motion passed.
Those of you that wanna leave, we're gonna take a, just a one-minute break and allow those of you that wanna leave to clear out.
Do we turn that ban on?
I was just with him, so.
Oh, okay.
He should be back. I'm gonna bring your new guy to Venus. You black, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring your new guy to Venus, only these days.
Oh, absolutely.
So you have a promotion today.
Well, that, we did that last week.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I just got a note.
He's, he's actually away on the, on the conference for the rest of the week, I will bring him back.
I can see you're number two, right?
Yep. Well, he's deputed, so.
Interesting, very good. Welcome back. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for your patience, uh I'd like to move forward. Hey, Mr. City Manager, you ready to roll?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. I don't have a gavel, so. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point two eight of the Casper Minnesota Code to adopt two thousand twenty-three National Electrical Code. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, uh the extent of my report is simply to say that uh pursuant to the state's action, that similar to what you're being asked to consider tonight. Uh, we're recommending that we follow that, that course and adopt the uh most current version of the uh National Electric Code uh to be consistent with statute and to maintain our local review authority.
Thank you, sir. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. This time I would ask any individuals wishing to speak in opposition to an ordinance adopting the, or excuse me, in favor of, you're speaking in favor of the two thousand twenty-three National Electrical Code, please approach the light. In favor of Mr. Sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we um so as I, I went back and listened to your last work session, I appreciate the discussion. Uh, and a lot of the questions. In particular I, I would have agree, I, I did call the legislative service office. Uh, they don't really aware of anything in particular that they get up for. Obviously, I'm not a legislator anymore. But I, I do believe that it should be something that some of your local legislators in the city of Casper should be able to look into further. Um, you know, and possibly help. I, I would suggest some of the new, newer members um might be a good uh situation for them to get involved with city government um from another perspective. Um, uh which this would be uh to look into uh what the, what the state issue is here uh in particular. Um, with that, I don't see uh where you have much choice either. As uh was the conclusion uh at the work session. I did find it interesting um uh the counselor that's a great Realtor. Um, I the information that I did hear uh from the uh one code enforcement and in building inspection. I don't know how you get financing um on a um of a twenty-year-old home. When I don't even think you can sell it as it is and get financing, and I think was his quote was you wouldn't be subject to, the way I took his comment was, you wouldn't be subject uh to, you'd be grandfathered basically on some of these things, but I of the inspection process alone. Um, I think you might have to bring it up to standards like FHA. Um, uh WCDA has requirements. So I don't know about that. Uh, but I don't see where you have a lot of choice, but I would ask that uh probably one of the things that came to mind for me was work with some of the newer legislators, um have them work with the city uh and the state on the issue. Uh, the other thought I had was, are there ways that the city can work with contractors? Um, or on properties that have been, quote unquote, closed. Um, you know, down um and work within the code guidelines. Um, such as the person's center building. If we don't work together on some of these things, that building is ultimately gonna be torn down. Um, or have to be by somebody. But uh and there's other examples I could use. But in uh in essence, I don't see where you have a choice. Uh, but to uh pass this, but I do ask that the city consider working together with contractors, with our Realtors, with folks for a future development on older properties and trying to, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for the National Electrical Code? Okay, we'll move on. This time I would ask uh any of those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-three National Electrical Code, please approach the light. Okay, where being no others to speak for or against an ordinance. Against the two thousand twenty-three National Electric Code, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending sections one five point two eight point zero one zero, one five point two eight zero four, one five point two eight point one seven zero, one five point two eight point three zero zero, one five two eight point three seven zero and one five two eight point four four zero of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the twenty twenty-three NFPA seventy National Electrical Code.
Thank you. Attorney Attorney, motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance is read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Gamra, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Discussion. Anyone, I could tell you as uh was stated in, in our work session, for those of you that weren't here for that, um we literally have no choice. If we do not adopt this ordinance, we give the state, uh, control. We don't align with what they're doing, that would give them the ability to come in and enforce uh, thereby taking the, the proprietary ability to do that from the city, and we're not interested in, in entertaining that, so. Anyone else? Lisa? Councillor Inger Brethson?
So I just wanted to clarify that, um, that, um, that you can purchase a house with old electrical. The problem is, is just that when you have inspections done, the inspector is inspecting it to the current codes. And so therefore what happens when that has, you get those reports, it is recommended, we told that it is outdated, it's a hazard, it's a safety issue, things of that nature of certain panels and whatnot. And so, um, buyers are not comfortable purchasing homes with outdated electrical. So they expect it to be brought to the code that the inspectors has noted of what's wrong. So that's kind of the crutch of it all is just that technically we don't, we can sell them with FHA, VA, or whatever else. It's just that it is presented that it could be a fire hazard, it's a safety issue. So therefore buyers do not want to purchase them if it's a hazard. So if, so sellers do have to bring them up to a code in order to sell the house.
Thank you. Councillor Kathy?
Uh, yes. Basically, one of the biggest things here too is they're now starting to tell you not only what types of outlets you can put in, but where you have to put them. Not specifically referring to the section that says islands and furniture and countertops and work surfaces are now optional. Provisions must be made for future installation of receptacles. And if they're installed, they cannot be on the sides, they have to be on the top, which to me seems counterintuitive to where you would want an electrical outlet. Because if you spill something on that countertop, the first place it's going is into that electrical outlet. So to me, that particular part of that code is asinine. I'll come right out and say it is that we have other people trying to drive common sense, dictate again what we can do in our own private homes, as is no gas stoves, gotta do that. You can only have these refrigerators, you must buy EVs, uh, enough's enough. But, uh, as Mr. Mayor said, to maintain any semblance of local control, we do have to pass this. So unfortunately, and against my better judgment, I will say yes.
Sir, anyone else, uh? No? Okay, any amendments? All right, very good. Uh, any extensions or naves? All in favor? Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
Gotta get my gavel. And now declare the public hearing open for consideration of an ordinance creating a local assessment district, one sixty, the Chinook Trail Improvements. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Andrew Beamer to Jay Carter Napier dated May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated May second, two thousand twenty-three. Estimated LAD assessment dated April seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Uh, this is the opportunity council has to entertain any public comment with regard to, uh, whether or not this assessment district should come into place and, uh, help with the, uh, uh, reconstruction of, uh, Chinook Trail, uh, itself and, um, and, uh, take it from its current condition to that of a paved street as, as a part of this district. And so with that, um, council have the opportunity to entertain this over a three reading process as well and, uh, see if indeed this, uh, this can move forward.
Thanks, sir. Council will now listen to public comment. Public, uh, hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of an ordinance getting LAD one six zero, please approach the light. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to an ordinance creating LAD one six zero, please approach the light. Okay, there being no one to speak for or against an ordinance creating LAD one six zero, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Creating City of Casper, Wyoming Local Assessment District Number One Sixty, here and after called the District, ordering the construction of improvements therein, describing the same, directing the preparation of plans and specifications for, providing for the publication of notice to contractors, fixing the boundaries of said district, ratifying action previously taken and prescribing details in connection with said district.
Thank you. Chair would, excuse me, entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by councillor Inger Brethson, seconded by councillor Jensen. Discussion. Uh, just for the sake of discussion, believe, is this not the one that the, this is different than what these folks actually came to us, correct? Very good. Any discussion, any other questions, comments? All right, very good, any amendments? Okay, any extensions or naves? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Council will now consider consent resolutions, please read consent resolutions by title.
Nine A one, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Civil Engineering Professionals Incorporated for redesign and rebidding for the utility improvements project. Nine A two, authorizing a purchase order for procurement of Seaquest corrosion inhibitor from Aquasmart Incorporated for use at the water treatment plant. Nine A three, authorizing an agreement with Seventy-one Construction for the PD impound lot improvements project. Nine A four, authorizing an agreement with Crown Construction LLC for the solid waste surfacing improvements project. Nine A five, authorizing an agreement with Crown Construction LLC for the Ford Wyoming Center South Walkway Replacements Project. Nine A six, authorizing an agreement with Trade-O Construction LLC for the Wolf Creek Road Improvements, West Thirty-eighth Street to West Forty, Fortyth Street Phase One Project. Nine A seven, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services between the City of Casper and Foxstar OpCo LLC, doing business as CTS Software for Transit Dispatch Software. Nine A eight, authorizing amendment three to the grant award agreement between the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security and City of Casper Regional Response Grant Number Nineteen. Nine A nine, adopting a fee schedule associated with administering utility billing services and water metering activities for the City of Casper Public Services Department, Public Utilities Division. And nine A ten, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Nicholas and Art Museum for use of optional one percent number sixteen tax special projects funds.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda I have just read.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by councillor Bond, seconded by
Inker Brethson.
Councillor Inger Brethson, thank you. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any extensions or naves? Very good, all voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Ten A one, authorizing a partial refund in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Parkway Parking Permit issued at eleven forty, South Center Street. Ten A two, authorizing the inclusion of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four summary proposed budget into the minutes of the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting. Ten A three, authorizing the purchase of one new haul truck to be used by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department. Ten A four, authorizing the purchase of one new skid steer loader to be spread by the wastewater treatment plant of the Public Services Department. Ten A five, authorizing the purchase of one new water truck to be used by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department. Ten A six, authorizing the purchase of three new half-ton extended cap four-by-four pickup trucks with eight-foot beds to be used by the Casper Metro Division. Ten A seven, authorizing the purchase of one new subcompact tractor with loader bucket and snow pusher blade to be used by the Casper Transit Division. Ten A eight, rejecting all bids received at Center Street Underpass Painting Project.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action, uh, agenda I have just read. Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor uh, any of extensions or naves? Very good, all voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the
This time we ask councillors to bring relevant concerns or items of interest. Councillor Inger Brethson?
Um, I'm going to be going to Cody tomorrow for the rest of the week for, for the WAM. And so unfortunately, I'll be missing a couple of other board meetings, so, um, yes, it is what it is, so that's, that's all that good.
Well, thank you. Councillor Jensen?
Um, yeah. So I just want to give a huge shout out to the Casper Marathon was this past weekend and it was, took literally the whole city to put that on. So from everybody, from volunteers to employees, to the board members of the marathon, police, the trail system, the EMTs, the county. Everyone, they just did an amazing job and we had thirty-one different states that visited and I think everybody had an awesome time. And so to it and a lot of planning and cooperation and so thank you for everybody who participated and who helped with that. Um, the other thing too, same time, the day before, which was wonderful, was the river cleanup and everybody participated in that. So it would made it really great since we had all those, we, it's just a good way to show off our city and have it all cleaned up before we had all these states running around. So it was great. So thank you for your help in cleaning up the river and keeping it pretty too. And that's it.
Well, thank you. Councillor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, was part of the grant committee review last week at Visit Casper for our community promotions funding last Thursday. Uh, I don't think the new councillors were on board at that time, but, uh, city had set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for community for, we went through all those grants, got through all the applications and we preliminarily distributed all those awards. So, uh, I guess is, uh, there'll be kind of an announcement along those lines. Uh, David Street Station had their first concert, uh, last Thursday night, almost got rained out, uh, but thankfully they pushed it for an hour and, uh, uh, all was well. Uh, you know, still pretty good turnout considering, but it, it was pretty nasty night earlier in the evening, so, um, it was kind of a bummer, that's what you get when you schedule stuff outdoors in Wyoming. Uh, councillor were you gonna mention MPO, uh, meeting this week ago?
Uh, yeah, the, okay, yeah.
Um, so other than that, I was just for some reason this past week, it felt like there was a whole bunch of stories in Oil City and Trib and Cowboy State Daily, uh, just highlighting Casper businesses and their content innovation. There was a Trib article about Infinite Outdoors and the software they came up with to help owners, uh, responsibly allow hunting on their land and connect them to hunters, eat in their barbecue at Eggingtons or expanding to California and Arizona and other parts of Wyoming. So it was just cool reading the news this past week, just seeing all these cool uh, businesses and people doing awesome things, so, um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that clear?
You bet.
My
What?
My
Sorry.
All right. So, uh, just a, there are quick, I just want to say another quick thank you to the Royal League Club. I had no idea they supported, uh, city resources in our community of kids as much as they do. And that's, that was really good to learn. Uh, second thing, just a lot of a lot of great things happening in Casper this, this month, of course, as everybody knows, the, the municipal band has published their schedule. Uh, you can check their, their Facebook, social media sites. Uh, I think first fundraiser is June eighth, this coming Thursday, Washington Park, right? And I believe, let's see, we got CNFR coming up. That'll be a great, that's another great opportunity for, for Wyoming. Uh, Pride Fest, that is David Street Station, Nick Fest is happening at the Nicholas on the weekend of the sixteenth, so lots of great things happening in Casper. People are coming to town, so good news.
Thanks, sir. Councillor Kathy? You can put in a big book for, for rodeo, sir? Okay, then I will, sorry, Stu, you're walking too. Dirt's on the ground already, so.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah. That does not surprise me, so. But I normally plug it if nobody else
You're the one that wanted to do so, and I'll piggyback if you missed anything.
Basically, the CNF rodeo starts on the eleventh at one thirty for the Bull's Brunks and Breakaway. And then for those of those that are interested in Slack, they will have Slack performances all day Monday and Tuesday morning. The night performances start Tuesday night and they run Tuesday all the way through Saturday night as the finals. So get out, enjoy the rodeo, be nice to the young participants and their families. We appreciate having them here and, uh, as a quote I heard when I was in Vegas for the NFR, be nice to the Cowboys. It's what they were promoting, so let's be nice to the Cowboys and their families. So that's my blog for the rodeo. Um, also, when I was watching last two weeks ago's work session and you were talking about the utility changes in rates that were brought up till we passed tonight and it was brought up, that it was brought up back in fifteen. And I've long stayed here, would have been here, but as I recall, when it came up in fifteen, we did not raise it because we were going through and in the middle of a major oil field downturn. We went from sixty-four rigs running in November of fourteen to about six by March of fifteen. And we looked at it similar to some of the angst I kind of heard in that discussion about I really want to raise because of the economy of stuff. And so that's, that's what got a kick down the road in fifteen. So just as a point of clarification for those that were around in fifteen, I thought I would bring that up.
That's it. Thank you. Councillor Hestons?
Okay, so as the judge stated, our meeting this Monday was postponed until next week, so I don't have any very important regards to that. However, I did want to bring up Habitat for Humanity is doing nightcaps for neighbors passports to help raise funds for that. It will go through all of June and applications for Habitat for Humanity, the opening will start July third. So buy a passport, have a beverage there, breweries, restaurants, distilleries all over Casper and help support a good cause. And Thursday, June eighth, five o'clock, the Concert for Hope for Oris Hope House will be at David Street with Chris Bunsek and Sean Suwili. And I just want to shout out to all graduates from over the weekend, we had close to a thousand kids graduate this weekend, so congratulations to all the Neutronic County grads. Oh, school's out on the eighth, too. Thursday, and the polls will open this weekend.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Councillor, I just want to make sure, councillor Pollock?
Thank you. Um, I got to join councillor Gamra and Visit Casper at the, uh, joint grant issuing, uh, meeting last week. Had a record number of applications submitted, uh, which is great to see lots of predominantly, um, event-based activity, folks hosting events, trying to bring uh, people to town. Um, so we had a great conversation with Visit Casper and partnership with them around that. I continue to be excited about that partnership and, um, I think we keep refining the process. Um, so I think it's a little different, a little better this year, and I think, um, we should keep working on, on those efforts in conjunction with Visit Casper to make sure that we're leveraging those funds in a way that creates the best impact for the community. Um, that process is basically done, uh, outside of just final vetting and, uh, any other details that need to be wrapped up. Beyond that, on Thursday at four o'clock this week at the National Historic Trails Center Conference Room, we have a public meeting for, um, the North Flat River Park Number Two Master Planning Effort that the Metropolitan Planning Organization has, um, uh, begun. So I was part of an initial meeting to place some parameters for that, along with the rest of the MPO. Um, this will be our first opportunity for the public to weigh in. So what we're looking at is the land of, of, uh, adjacent near the, uh, Ford Wyoming Center, near where the, uh, ground will soon be breaking on the Wyoming Sports Ranch. And so, um, we're wanting to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on, um, what they like to see, uh, development-wise up in that area. Lots of potential for our community there, I think, and, um, want to be sure that we're approaching it, um, uh, in as holistic a way as possible. So there'll be a couple public opportunities, but your first one will be four o'clock on Thursday. So would encourage anybody who's interested in that, uh, area of development, please join, uh, at that meeting and, um, lay out your thoughts and vision for that area so that we can take them into account as we work through the rest of that process. Um, and last thing, I will unfortunately be missing the next two meetings, I will be Um, and last thing, I will unfortunately be missing the next two meetings. I will be joining the Wyoming Business Council in I want for trade mission promoting Wyoming-made products, so there'll be a number of companies represented there. It'll be an exciting opportunity to promote products that are made here in Wyoming to, um, Taiwan and, um, the rest of Asia, uh, you know, folks from buyers from, from all around Asia in the area will be attending, so, uh, lots of, we'll have a big Wyoming booth, and we'll be able to really, um, showcase all of the great things being made in Wyoming right now, so. We'll be part of that opportunity, but unfortunately it will mean that I have to miss it. I think that is all I have.
Totally excusable. I'm going to Taiwan.
I'm excited, yeah.
I offered to go with security.
I'm waiting for like the podcast, I mean, Amber and she's on.
Right. That'd be cool. Okay, I got a few things. Uh, C N F R starts June eleventh, so that is Sunday, next Sunday it starts. They've already got the uh, lot going on up there to prepare for all these Cowboys, and this is a premier event, uh, it is the best of the best when it comes to college rodeo. So if you get an opportunity to go see, uh, season tickets are up. Uh, sales are up, um, it, it's just a wonderful show to go, it's very inexpensive. I, in fact, I think it's, I don't want to quote, but I think it's like ten dollars to go, which is just an amazing price to go watch these supreme athletes and these supreme animals competing with each other. Uh, and it's a great venue, it's inside, so even when it's raining out, uh, we got a nice dry spot to be in. Uh, but it's a lot of fun. I'm on that committee, and, uh, it's ju- just a wonderful organization. I didn't realize you were part of that, so thank you for helping bring that to Casper, because that is a a big generator for us. It is a, it brings us national exposure, um, as we get athletes from all over the country that come to this. Uh, it's just an amazing thing to be a part of, uh, and it, and it's run by a great group of people. Uh, we have a brand new sound system up there at the event center now, and apparently when someone speaks, it is just as crystal clear as if they're sitting in front of you. Uh, so, yep, it was put in last week.
I want to say it's not crystal clear.
Oh, why? The word is, it's really good, but I guess we'll find out come next month. Um, Tuesday is, uh, excuse me, the following Saturday is Casper Day, and I believe Sunday is, they're gonna have mutton busting for the first time, so if you'd like to watch that, or you have a child that's between fifty-five and seventy-five pounds, sixty-five, it's a maximum of sixty-five pounds. Um, they can get in on that, they can actually win a buckle, and, uh, there is no free registration, you sign up the day of. So, um, if you got, want to see your kid, uh, in the event center riding a sheep, you're bigger than six, sixty-five pounds. I didn't mean to get your weight up, honey, sorry. My daughter's visiting for the summer, so she gets to partake in government stuff, yay. Uh, it is important to this council when folks come and speak to us, uh, and have community involvement, so Mr. Mayor's, I believe his name is said, that stuff will be forwarded to the city city's, uh, office, because that involves personnel, which, uh, the council does not get involved in, uh, but that stuff will go forward. Um, where it goes from there is, is beyond us, but it will be, it will be moved on from here. Um, there's a lot of stuff going on in Casper. I know, uh, the last Rock the Block last weekend, or last Thursday, uh, Rock the Lot, I think they're calling it, was up at Sunrise. We went, my wife and I, my daughter, my dog, there were, up there was a thousand people up there, that was an amazing turnout, and the weather was horrible. So I think the community is wanting those types of things, and they are supporting them, so that was good to see. I don't know for sure, but I understand, um, the Old Yellowstone Garage, which is now Bullhorn, Bullhorn Hurry, it's gonna be doing them on Wednesdays. Uh, their version of it, so you'll have live music Wednesday nights there, Thursday nights up at Sunrise. Um, and then we have several concerts at the David Street Station going on also, which I think the first big one is Thurs- this coming Thursday night. So, uh, great timing for that, considering, uh, C N F R contestants will be rolling into town. So it's gonna be really busy in town, uh, be, be mindful, be kind. Um, we're not used to this type of traffic, but it's good for our community, the dollars are fantastic for us. Um, very proud of our Rotary Club, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, uh, they've given to our city for parks and, uh, what, what an amazing group and just an amazing, uh, philanthropic thing to do for our city, so we want to thank them.
We got a new member too.
The Rotary, are you, our very own director of parks is now a Rotaryian, so good for you. She'll do them wonderful. Uh, Thursday night, don't forget is government night for those of you folks, um. Yeah, it's gonna be a real busy Thursday, but this is Thursday, the the fall, yeah, the fifteenth, so, uh, we'll make sure that you get your tickets next week, uh, for that. Uh, school is out, which means kids are gonna be everywhere. Our drivers need to be really mindful. I had a little one run out in front of me literally this morning. Mom was on the phone, patting by the hand, was that quick, I saw it way ahead of time, and I, I stopped and waited, but he literally ran right in front of my truck, and his mother's like, you know, she was panicked, and thank God I was looking. But it's that time of year, kids are out of school, our streets are busier. Please, please be mindful, be careful. Wouldn't have been my fault, but thank God I'm paying attention, right? We don't need that kind of stuff. Um, and lastly, I, I am always one to speak for the unborn, as you all know where I stand. And I appreciate those folks who came to speak tonight. I want you to understand, regardless of how this council views it or sees it, that is a legal business, and this council, there's nothing we can do about that. There's just not. Uh, do I personally want it in our community? No, I don't. But guess what? As a mayor, I welcome their business because they are a little business. So with that said, we will await the Supreme Court to make their ruling, and hopefully they'll go along with our legislator, legislators who've already decided they shouldn't be here, and that'll be how it is, but that is settled way above our purview. So please be kind to our counselors, uh, it is not our position to take in this particular fight right now. So, uh, with that said, uh, we, uh, noticed of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given, we have matters to discuss regarding security, personnel, and litigation, therefore the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn excuse me, into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
Excellent.
Moved by Counselor Pollak, seconded by Counselor Haskins. There being a majority of councilors present, a motion to adjourn into an executive session that's been moved, and seconded, the motion requires a two-thirds majority of the council present. Any extensions or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the votes.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Created in two-thirds majority, the council president voted in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned to your executive session. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you.